Well, we come once again today thanking you for another opportunity to live and to serve in Ashland, Kentucky. We ask today for your wisdom and guidance on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and most of all, our citizens. Bless all those in attendance today and with us throughout this afternoon. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
I oversee following minutes of our regular meeting January 10th of 2019 and our regular meeting January 24th of 2019. Any discussion, all favor. Aye. Here's reports, Commissioners?
I just want to thank everybody for being here, welcome you this afternoon. We got a full house, and I've got Tomcat football schedules in my pocket if anybody needs them, okay? A lot of Tomcat here, Tomcat people here today. I'm glad to see you all at this Youth Leadership. My daughter was in this a couple of years ago, and it's a good thing. I just want to say, welcome and many thanks to Ashland Emotion and the sponsors and all the vendors for last Saturday and the gravy ball. It was an overflow crowd, to say the least, and it was a good day. It was the second annual year that this has taken place, and it was a real successful event, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm just going to add to that just a little bit. Again, the Ashland Youth Leadership Board, I got the opportunity to talk to you for a little while this morning. Thanks for coming, thanks for sitting in those seats all day today. I'm glad you got to go see somewhere else for just a little while. You know, I think, Mayor, you mentioned to this group as well, this Board of Commissioners takes the future of these young men and women very seriously, and it's great to see them here and engaged in what we're doing so that they can be part of the process. Chuck, thanks for bringing them, appreciate that. Another, I told Commissioner Perkins before we sat down, it feels like we haven't met in ages, and so I was trying to go through my list of things that we've done since the last time we met. Several of us got to go to Ashland Middle School to highlight the sulfur tomorrow, their sulfur tomorrow, and that was a great thing to see, the Lieutenant Governor was there as well. They were in Frankfurt the day before yesterday, I think it was, and they will actually be in California in a couple of weeks. They're going to tour the Google facility because that's what they decided to do with their winnings. But it was, those kids are doing great things there, and that's really a crown for our cap as well. Yesterday, the city manager and Catherine Edsinger and I were able to go to the Kentucky League of Cities City Day and met with Representative Atkins and Representative Clark as well as Senator Webb, so that was a great day as well. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay? And again, I want to welcome all of you. How many Green County students we have? One sneeze, Green County? What'd you bring up? Now, how many of my kids in Ashland are going to be out of school tomorrow? We welcome you all especially too, we're glad you're here, because pretty much, all of us, we, Boyd and Green Counties, all of us are tied in together, and it's important that we continue to do that and do a lot of things together. And Chuck, again, thank you for heading up this group and bringing them in here today. I don't know that that's a normal process. I think they come down sometimes and look around and tour and so forth, so we, as elected officials, appreciate that a lot. And how we work together, so, just the other day, I pulled our judges and mayors from Boyd and Green Counties together, we met here in the city building, and it started out as just an informal situation because I pulled them together to initiate some future meetings with AK Steel. And all, everybody was represented from Boyd and Green Counties here, and we're hoping to, in some kind of combined effort, work with AK officials out of Middletown and elsewhere to market that property. I think the day of thinking that they're going to come in and maybe start working again there, I think they've been hanging by a thread for several years. I, when I graduated from college, my first summer job out of college was at Armco Steel, and there were about 57, 58, 100 employees there. My dad worked there and raised us. Most of the kids in Ashland were Armco families. Ashnull had a lot of impact too, but the biggest impact was Armco. It began, it began as a Ashland Coal and Manufacturing, Iron Coal and Manufacturing Company back before the turn of the century. And a little, little bit of history, I used to study Central Park in depth. Central Park used to be privately owned by Armco, and they used to have huge fairs and festivals there every year, and there was actually, at a time, there was a wooden fence that went all the way around Central Park. There was also a racetrack in Central Park, up where the CP number one diamond is, was a racetrack. And you, if you go to the library or some places around town have pictures of actually the racetrack, the grandstand, and one of the big tall birch trees or beech trees there, they actually cut a hole in the roof of the grandstand, had this huge beech tree that went up through it. A lot of, a lot of history there. Well, Armco was in a lurch one year, one time of the year from being payroll, so they contacted the mayor and commission here in Ashland and offered to sell the city park for $32,500. That was in 1900. $32,500. There's 47 acres up there, and you know how valuable it would be if you were going to build developments there to a business or anything. But fortunately, Armco needed the money, and the other fortunate thing was that our city had to force it. Now, they gave the city five years to pay that, Chuck, the 32, so they didn't pay that over a five-year period. So, we have, for the size of our town, there's no city in America that has a park on Central Park. And we protect it all we can, every day, and it belongs to everybody in Ashland. It's a part of their yard, and that's the way I look at it. But anyway, that's a little history I want to throw out, since we've got the students here, we can take that with you. A lot of people don't know that. A lot of old timers in Ashland have no clue Armco sold that to the city or for how much. But there are so many wonderful pictures of the history of Ashland at the library, big books that you can look back through, and it makes you proud, it makes you very proud of being in Ashland or in Green County. We used to be one county, Marina, y'all know that. So, we were all one big county, and we have too many counties in Kentucky. If you remember Kentucky history, we have 120, and you know, you take some states, like Florida has 22, and they have 10 times more than that. Ohio has 88. I went to college in Ohio, I taught Ohio history, believe it or not, but I remember everything about Ohio. But big cities, a lot of population, they have 88s. We have 120 counties. We should not have that. If you're ever, if you're ever in the legislature, enough of you, I've talked to them all the time, and it'll never happen, of course, we don't need that many. That means 120 county judges, jailers, sheriffs, police patrols in the county, city, duplication of services that your parents, your grandparents, ours, everybody pays for all those extra services. We should have fewer counties, fewer governments. It would make everything better for everyone, I assure you it would. But anyway, we're glad you're here, glad you take something with you from here that maybe makes you proud of the city government. Over.
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing.
Go right ahead.
Something historic happened, and I just found it out. The first time in history that the Ashland American and the Ashland National Little League have merged, and now it's going to be the Ashland League, and so that's a switch. They merged.
Well, that is, that is good, and it's not so good. Let me tell you why it's not so good. I've got to tell you this. I pitched the first game in Ashland Little League history. Edward Junis, who just went out of office with Judge Cole, was a deputy judge. He pitched with Cubs, I pitched with Reds, the first game back in 1955. I know I don't look that old, but I... And Commissioner Goop, that's a good thing to bring up, what it tells me is, number one thing, we don't have enough kids to play Little League. We had, we started, there were kids everywhere, there were only, there were four teams, a national, four in America, so it was only eight then. But then, the next year Babe Ruth started, I got to play first Babe Ruth game, I went and pitched with them, but I played. But kids play. Now, there's a combination of, we don't have as many families, as many kids, because the only way you have them is jobs. And AK's closed, I got out of college, started coaching and teaching at Public Junior High. We had 900, well, we had about 800 students. Cole's Junior High, the All-American, had 900 students, 1,700 students in junior high. And I wasn't, I was in administration when they combined the schools, which was kind of a sad thing, because then your population was dwindling. That happens all over America, cities, downtowns, everything. We have to think that we're great survivors. Armco dipping down to where they, you know, became AK and now they're closed. Ashnull was a Fortune 500 company. We had the executive headquarters, it started here. And of course, the majority of employees worked at the plant. It was Ashnull and that's Marathon, it's still vitally important to us. But about 400 administrative jobs in the old Ashnull building out there are empty. It hurt everybody in town when they left. And you understand, jobs means the businesses you have in your community have people to shop there, to use their services, to buy their materials, whatever the case might be. Schools depend on jobs in the community, and we're doing everything we can to bring jobs back into Ashland, because everything depends on it. So, I want you to know we're after it, and you all will either reap the benefits or maybe it won't get as good as we hope it gets, but we think we're on an upswing. And with things that hit us, you imagine, the steel plant that used to have almost 6,000 people, and it got down to when they closed the other day, it's about 230, and it closed. And Ashnull took all the executives, and that was a lot. And many of those people were volunteers, donators to charities. I mean, there's so many appendages out there when you have people with good jobs in your community. They help others. They help with everything. When I have a collective audience of young people, I like to say some of these things, because it's on your shoulders. We're still fighting the battles, but it'll be on your shoulders. We're glad you're here. City Manager?
Three Adams, Mayor, if I could have Tammy McKinney come up, please? Tammy is one of our valued city employees who works down at the bus station, and she went above and beyond the call of duty a couple of days ago. I'm going to read a little bit of details that are associated with this certificate of achievement. On January 30th, we had a Greyhound bus that should have arrived at 5:20 in the morning and didn't pull in until 2:30 in the afternoon. And the Greyhound bus pulled into our lane between the building and the flood wall, it broke down. There were 15 passengers onboard, one being a toddler and the driver. They were hours in line on their trip and were pretty miserable. Tammy, through her swift and thoughtful work, listened to their frustrations, some of which were hunger from being stuck on a bus way longer than anticipated. They were tired, miserable, and cold. Tammy made contact with the corporate office of Greyhound, continued push until she spoke with upper level management, quite like the bulldog I'm told, and relayed their complaints and concerns, especially about being hungry. Since we only have the vending machine on site, Greyhound agreed to offer buy them pizza while they're waiting for another bus. Tammy got contact information for almas and did, almas and did the legwork for getting them pizza, and then she served them, made them a pot of coffee, and coordinated with the maintenance staff that comes out and blocked the lane until, make sure others were aware of the bus. So, these weren't even technically our city customers, if you will, but Tammy saw a need, she jumped to it, she didn't have to be told, and this is just a great reflection of what this city staff does, not just for our citizens, we're making an impact on those people, Mayor, who do come through the city and say, those people will never forget Ashland, Tammy, because of you. It's got a special place in their heart, and we wanted to publicly recognize it.
Right. And again, people like Tammy, it's like, y'all talked about the park, because it's the jewel of our town. It's really our people who make it, our employees make our city, our city government, you know, not the elected officials. And those people, just with some strangers, not even from here, just stopping by, they'll never forget Ashland, Kentucky, because of you, Tammy. Now, my secretary does these, and she makes the print a little bigger. These aren't prescriptions, by the way. I have 33 pairs of these in every room in the house and all that. Tammy K., February 13th, 2019, you're being committed for the swift and thoughtful work on taking care of stranded Greyhound bus passengers on January 30th, 2019. Thank you for being compassionate and going above and beyond to care for those in extremely adverse situations. In recognition of your excellent performance and dedication to serving the citizens, community of Ashland, Kentucky, we say thank you. Thank you so much.
Second item I had, Mayor, Commissioners, and City was, we did get to attend the KLC, the Kentucky League of Cities Year of Directors meeting yesterday, actually, I got to attend that. Had two speakers, Representative Bam Carney, who's the House Majority Floor Leader, and also Robert Steifer, who's the current Senate President. As you can imagine, the number one topic was on the basis. And just for you to know, KLC, the Kentucky League of Cities, is advocating that the county employees retirement system be separated from Kentucky retirement system. The reason they're advocating for that is that the county and city employees pay about 70% into that fund, and they're about 30% represented on the board. It's a very controversial topic. As you can imagine, we did hear those representatives talk about the complexity and that it's the number one thing, and they have to deal with it because of the impact of many of the people that are sitting in the back of the room especially, but across the state. Of course, you've been talking on the television about that. Of note, Mayor, the Louisville Mayor is definitely making a try for all cities to continue to push with our elected officials at the state, I don't know what the pain threshold is going to be in the cities as this continue bill requires more money from the cities, and ours is 12%, potentially for 10 years, if I understand the bill correctly. Last thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, was recently, there was discussion, recommendations from, in one of these sessions, about the city adopting a responsible bidder ordinance. The city staff has reviewed our existing procurement ordinance, I've been talking about a couple of meetings, and in courts with the ordinance have created a detailed, two documents, a bidder vendor prequalification disclosure statement and a defined evaluated bid criteria. So essentially, the bidder vendor prequalification disclosure statement determines if companies are qualified to bid or not on state projects. We can disqualify bidders who have not performed to standard in the past, although that happens very rarely. This would enable us to do that pretty cleanly. Also, the defined evaluated bid criteria provides a city with flexibility to not necessarily go with the lowest bid. It allows us to find and determine exactly the specifications for lowest evaluated bid. So, I wanted to let, and we'll start implementing that soon, and I didn't know if y'all had any questions on that or not.
No, I appreciate all staff's work on it. I think when we had some local labor representatives come in, they were concerned about training, or more so the workman's comp, do they have workman's comp, do they have OSHA, they pay, they deal with OSHA standards and those issues like that. And in fact, our ordinance contains both of those items in particular, and in checking around the state and looking at our ordinance, we, ours is very solid, and I think what everybody interested in that should know is that we've added in an evaluation process. We weren't getting very many bidders, plain and simple. And so, I got a list of the contractors and companies that had been bidding over the years or had picked up bid packets, kind of, and they paid money to get the packet, and they don't submit a bid, or whatever the case may be. So, I send a letter, contact all them. So, I'm getting a few calls every day and learning, you know, number one, because they got my letter, they're now interested in getting in the mix. We can't guarantee anybody, you know, who's going to get those bids, but we want a good representation from our area. Now, there are places, like I talked to a couple, for y'all some information, over Ohio, a really nice people I talked to on the phone and just said that they, they don't have rights to work in Ohio, and there's a prevailing wage over there, and they're not going to come over here and work. Their men won't work over here because, you know, it's not regulated anymore. So, those are out of our hands, we can't do anything about that. But, and the other thing is, of course, our legal counsel had to hang tough with it on the evaluation process, so, you know, it's easy to say, I mean, we always, when I was in the school system and most of my life, and then when I got an administration there, we always used the terminology, lowest, most responsible bidder. And that kind of means somebody that really can do the job and will do the job. And I have found, because I've been in city government a long time, and I've been in the bid system almost 40 years, that public agencies, like a school system or like the city, are not always treated the same way by contractors as if a company like King's Daughter's Hospital or Marathon Oil hires a contractor in, they, the contractor knows they better, they better do the right thing. Well, we want to think the same thing that take a job in the city, and I hope in the school system, the same way, we do in the office in the tent, I can tell you that. We watched everything going on. If we, if we weren't sure, we would hire a construction manager to oversee it, and it saves you money by spending a little bit more money to oversee a job. So, it's kind of a, I'm hoping that the publicity will be, Carly, things like, we expect, and I've met with a couple of contractors over the last year or so with the city manager that we're having some difficulties with. And I make sure they understand real quick that when I sit down at the table, I have 22,000 taxpaying citizens looking over my shoulder, saying, Mayor, you got to get the best job possible for us, that's our hard-earned tax money. And you know in Ashland, Kentucky, and a lot of other small-town Americas, the majority of our people are not working. The majority of our people are over 55, and many of them have paid their duties, many of them over 65 and 70 in Ashland. But they've done their deal, and they're not working, they're not making salaries to, where we can just tax them all the time and, or pay the kind of prices that some contractors want to do a job. You know, in government, it doesn't work that bad. We have to get the best we can possibly get with what we can afford, and that doesn't mean that we hire somebody that can't do good work. So, we're going to, this evaluation process is going to put people kind of through it to make sure, references, where have you done jobs? You done a job like this before? Maybe we go see what you, not only just call the people, we'll go take a look at what you did. And I know we did that in the school system, on the stadium, on the middle school construction and all that. So, yeah, I think we got, we have a good ordinance, the bottom line is, we have a good ordinance, all we're doing is addressing the culture.
So, is there any material change to the language in the ordinance?
There's no, actually, there's no change to the ordinance at all. This is, the two attachments that I just referenced, Commissioner, are in accordance with the ordinance. We can define what those criteria are for vendor qualification. This lays it out specifically in these exhibits, et cetera, here's what they are. The Mayor's point, we did, it was a healthy exercise, and before I forget, I want to thank the staff, because there was a lot of, there was a lot of meeting time that went into this and some, you know, what ifs and, you know, secondary tertiary effects. But to your point, Commissioner, more details on Brooklyn's safety health program, more details on the substance abuse program, ensuring compliance with current federal and state wage and law, our laws, and also language to ensuring equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity was addressed. So, I think those are all a healthy result, but no need, no need to change the ordinance.
So, can any of these requirements that you have changed, be changed again in the future and would not require board approval?
Actually, we expect them to be iterative. So, this goes out there and it goes through a process, and somebody says, hey, this was forgotten, or what about this? Absolutely, it can be iterative, but this is in accordance with the way the ordinance is written.
So, any change, no, so any change that has happened in how you handle bidder requests is at the discretion of the city manager?
The ordinance specifically reads, "The city manager may establish a program for vendor prequalification. To establish a program for vendor prequalification, city manager or administrative personnel so designated by him shall solicit from each prospective vendor sufficient information to permit evaluation of qualifications in terms of the following. Four subcategories: the ability and capacity to perform on a timely basis under contract for goods or services he wishes to bid on and supply; number two, good character, integrity, reputation, experience; number three, satisfactory performance in prior dealings with the city; and number four, satisfactory performance in dealings with other local government units, the state, and other state governments."
My only, my only concern is, if, if at any point you want to change the requirements for how we choose a bidder, would you then come before the board? Is that, is this, is this whole process just giving us an opportunity to have input on it, but it's really not required for us to have input on this part exactly?
Body ordinance has impact, right? And so, that's why we want to share the information with you all in advance, make sure that if you've got any input on it or, you know, will you share that with for advice?
Commissioner, if I can make a little stab at this, the, it's a twofold process. One, before anybody is entitled to bid on a city of Ashland project, they have to either be prequalified or qualified. That's in our existing ordinance. And our existing ordinance has the language in there that says what the standards are that they have to meet in order to do that. And that's the language that city managers have just read to you, which talks about the character, reputation, integrity, expertise, satisfactory performance on previous contracts with the city, satisfactory performance on other contracts. Now, that is something that I wouldn't expect to happen very often, that you have to ban somebody and say that you're not going to bid on a city contract, but if you reached a previous contract with us, for instance, you came back to bid another one, I don't know that we're going to free up, approve you to bid. The second part of the process, and this and that is under both the state statute and other, our ordinance, which has similar language, says that you can have evaluated bids, which is different than just simply the lowest bid. It doesn't specify, neither the state ordinance nor in our ordinance, what those evaluated bid criteria are. Staff worked up a listing of, I think, 11 evaluated bid criteria, positive things, that the way we propose doing it would be that if you had, I think, 70% of these criteria and you would bid, I don't know, 15% of the lowest bid, you could be raised up. Now, if you wanted to change those, and that's why we submitted this to all the Commissioners to get your input, it wouldn't require change in the ordinance, it just requires a change in the, in the staff and qualifications. Those go out as part of the bid process, so if you send them out in one bid, that's the criteria for that bid, but if you want, if you decide that this is not quite working, we want to change it, we can change it and just, next time you bid a project, we notify of what the evaluated bid criteria are that are going to be considered. So, it's a long-winded answer, but that's why there's flexibility and why we think our existing ordinance allows us to do whatever you all direct the staff to do in that area.
And you feel the way the ordinance is written, that we are getting the best work and we are also holding the subcontractors to account for poor performance?
Well, I think this is going to allow us to do a better job of that. That, that's exactly what it's intended to do. Like anything, it's going to require execution, and it's going to require enforcement.
So, do we, do we have an ordinance in place that requires the staff to grade performance of?
Would you not? And that's one of the things that we've talked about, and city managers talk about in staff meetings, is whether or not we ought to also identify something that will be put in each file, so to speak, when a project is finished, and will be a grade of some sort from the staff. So, we can say, was this, you know, satisfactory, unsatisfactory, was this great, was this just okay? And that's been tossed around as a possibility too, because that, that can give you some reference to the criteria, have you satisfactory performed a previous contract? Well, you know, it'd be nice if we have something that says, yeah, here's that. Well, you know, it'd be nice if we have something that says, yeah, here's how you do it.
I can't speak for the board, but I will tell you that it is imperative to me that we grade the contractors and that we document the work completed every project because it is taxpayer money. And we would hold a contractor to account for anything we do or have done at our home.
You bet.
And I think it's, if we need to put, I think honestly it needs to be ordinance that we have every city project completed by a subcontractor graded so that we can feel assured that the contractor knows we're grading their work and we, as a body, can say that to the taxpayer. We are checking every project to make sure it's the best it can be.
Well, I agree a hundred percent. But here, the issue, it's kind of an imperfect system on, on its face because you think it's, uh, not so good. You know, it may end up, as we discussed in a couple of work sessions, uh, we may end up in court, which I'm more than happy to do that on behalf of the taxpayers in Boyd County, Kentucky. If we've done our homework and we, we kept a check and balance on whoever's putting the work. Uh, for instance, you get a contractor in and, and they, they get the low bid. This has happened. I will say this, Commissioner, this is a heck of a good starting point for us. We're so far ahead of the curve on focusing. And, and I really want that word out there. I mean, I don't want anybody to bid the job if they're just not gonna, you know, do, do the best work for us. The other thing is, and not just Ashland, Kentucky, anywhere, people get bids and they're already thinking change orders. And if you look historically, just, just the last two years we've been in office, uh, you know, we can, we can look at some contractors that have done the work. Well, you know, if you count the change order, they probably wouldn't have been the low bidder in the first place. I, I don't have to give an example. So to me, Mayor, I think you all have done a, a really good first step there, which might be a long step for us in making sure the public, the taxpayer, get the very best job at, at the price that we intended to be and not run, run it up. It's, it's a slippery slope on, um, who, I'm sure, and I'm just gonna leave it up to council, but, uh, on the pre-qualification and all that. But if we're doing the things you're asking about and doing this grading system, it, it's, it's, it has more traction. And if it ends up in Boyd County courts, so be it. And that may not be a negative at all. I think the, the message can be out there, look, we're, we're not going separate like this. So, uh, I think our staff was aware of the intent of this commission. It's a very strong intent to get the best for, for what they're bidding and they, they got references and all that. And those that we already know have not done so well, be able to scratch them.
When the bid goes out also, there's a, uh, bid, probably the terminology right, for the performance evaluation and that changes based on the project itself. So it, it rode versus whatever makes sense out there. Um, and so that is what they'll be graded on. And to have that annotated in the file, you know, you go in and find the, the project or whatever, that's in there with the evaluation. And I think that's probably where, there's a lot of really great conversations in the meetings that we're trying to develop this. Because I think like the mayor is saying, you don't want it to be so restrictive that you've eliminated people from doing business. You want to be able to evaluate them, not just on price, for example. You don't want, we don't want to just say, well, this bidder, like you all have said, we want the quality that represents the taxpayers. So I think it is, like the mayor said, a good first step. We'll have the evaluations in there. We have a lot of debates as of today, you know. One to end with, is it written? And we feel like based on the engineer texts and, and example, going out constantly grading a project, they've got those notes from their logs every day. They do that written evaluation of what that is. It crosses a threshold on this, it's actually ten criteria on the evaluated bid. Hey, have you successfully completed at least two projects of comparable size and complexity? Yes or no? We've got that in the file that says that. So I think, I think we're, I think we're in the same place.
I hope that in there, in that grading system, uh, that maybe it's worded differently and maybe when we look at it, we, it doesn't jump out at us. But the thing we, you know, talk about all the time, Commissioner, is having your own job or not on the job. And we, we award contracts and they're supposed to start a certain date and you keep driving by and there's nobody there. Nobody's working, well, we know what's going on. They got another job and they're gonna squeeze that in and, you know, that's okay. Hire more people, you know, to do that job. I don't want public institutions like school systems and cities, and that's where I'm at now, to be the ones left out. But we'll get to you. You know, we got, we got a hundred and thirty days to do that job. And they get to about forty days left and they come to us and say, you know, we're gonna need an extension. You know, we had some bad weather. Yeah, it rained one day. I mean, these are things that happen, of course. But the number of people that actually put on job site, how many days they're on the job site? We know Twenty-Ninth Street was a problem in both those categories. Uh, change orders, major problem. Now, either, either we're not, either we're not designing the contract right and whether it's out of engineering, I don't know where it's out, out of, but either, either we're doing a very poor job of determining what the job is because why, why a change order? I don't understand that. And that's historical down here, it really is. So that's why I'm hoping this will be the, and following timelines. If you're supposed to end April one on this job, don't come up March twenty fifth and say, well, you know, we had men sick, you know, uh, one got hurt on the job and we're gonna cut us back and all that. And that happened, has happened and will happen. But all of those things, counselor, I'm assuming would be recorded, kept track of. So as part of the, the, the next founders of pre-qualification, those things would all come out. It's probably a slow process, a process that needs to be followed. And if we need to, what the managers mentioned is the add-ons to that ordinance. So should we, should we, uh, as a motion, add those as part of that ordinance? As addendums?
Well, if we were, if we're gonna change the ordinance, we'd have to go through first and second reading. And I, I think what you all are talking about, it's actually been in the works since I started to develop a form, so to speak. And I think it was a two or three page form, if I'm not mistaken, that would look at all those factors. So each time a job is finished, the people who oversee the job would mark that, put it in the file, so we'd have a, a reference. And then the next time you're...
Do we need to put that aspect of this process in the ordinance? I think that's the question that we're all asking.
You can, you can. Well, you need to, you need to tell us whether we should or not.
I think, I think it's essential that that be required. I don't think it needs to be flexible. I think, I think the taxpayers expect us to have every project reviewed that they have their money spent on.
I would, I would suggest that if you do it, rather than making the actual form a part of the, uh, ordinance, that you just say that there will be one. Because if you make the actual form part of it and every time somebody wants to tweak it a little bit, you're gonna go back and amend the ordinance.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think just saying that, that projects will be reviewed.
We do, do three readings of an addendum to that ordinance, not change the ordinance, but just, I, again, I'm not trying to take your spot, but, but say, uh, you know, we would like to, to add an addendum to that.
I know what the commissioner's talking about. It'd be, it'd be easy.
You'll find the, the longer, you're down there working stuff like this. If it's not written, it didn't happen, it ain't gonna happen. And that gives the commission, you know, more, more authority in the process.
You understand that? Can we bring it back to the next meeting?
Okay. Thank you. Getting your manager, sir? Anybody?
Okay. Uh, this part of our meeting is public participation. And we would ask you, if you have something you'd like to bring before, uh, the board of commissioners, we'll ask you, give your name and address and keep your comments five minutes or less. Yours doesn't count. You get up and say them as long as you want, because you've got a whole group, yes, sir. You've got a whole group here. If you'd like to, or anybody. Any students want, or?
Been in front of you guys before. I'm Melissa Rigsby. I'm the Ashland, um, the old Ashland College. And the process of submitting the, um, applications for the CBD grant. I've just completed, I think, last week, was it the fourth that those were due? I think they're, they were due the fourth. So I just wanted to give you guys some, I've, I've got one for each commissioner because I had to put it in with three, um, with the application. So hopefully that was for the rest of you guys.
And Melissa, what's your address?
Um, oh, I'm sorry. You want my personal address?
Yeah, so, so the record.
Eighty-four St. Route eighty-three, four Russian, technical. The, the property is fourteen-twenty Seventy-Five. We're all familiar with that.
Very aware.
So I made each of you a packet because, um, when I talked to Ms. Woolery in, in Economic Development and asked if there was any help with navigating this application process, she very kindly advised me to, um, contact my attorney. And that was good advice because I don't know if any of you have ever read through the block grant program or the national and federal incentives and objectives?
Probably not, Melissa.
Well, I have, six weeks. I've studied it and I've hired two people to help me study it. So with, with studying that and the research that I've gone through, I would like to share some, I think, pertinent information that pertains to my application in case it does make it in front of you guys to vote on. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Give her a call.
Does anyone want a copy of the national objectives or the, um, development off the topic grant program?
You know, I'd go, I'd go to bed early. Now, I might put those on my pillow.
And there's some, plenty of support from the committee in here as well.
Well, we can submit those in support of the application. There is a process for a committee that reviews the application, reviews all of the applications and then makes regular data, which ultimately is a recommendation to grant. It comes before the commission. So it, it's probably not appropriate to consider specifics of any particular application here at this time because all the applicants, uh, submit what they have. It goes before committee and it's reviewed in that process. But we can certainly accept and receive what you have if you have an already filed application.
I have.
If this is official.
Yes, I have filed the application. And this information is just in case my application makes it in front of you guys. You know the research and work that was involved in the application process and that I did do my due diligence.
Okay.
That's all.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much. Yes. All my favorite people, all my former teachers and, uh, fellow pet lover.
Yes.
And you are, and you're with...
Okay. I'm Kathy Queen, uh, twenty-five nineteen Auburn Avenue here in Ashland. Um, I'm a retired teacher and educator here in Ashland, Kentucky. Twenty-seven years I devoted to my children. Now I have a new avenue, um, the well-being of our animals in this community. And when I heard that there was some, going to be some discussion about some new ordinances, hopefully that we can, you know, do for our community, I wanted to be involved. And all I can say is that we as a community can do much better than what we're doing now.
And you, and your organization is?
I'm with Ashland Animal Rescue, but are. And we've been around since two thousand nine and I've been with them since two thousand ten. But post-retirement, this is full-time volunteer work for me. Um, we have some models within our state. Our current laws in Kentucky are very vague, um, but we can do better because Louisville and Lexington have devised some models and they have enforced these models in their community for the well-being and safety of the animals. Um, this past couple of weeks, whenever we had the terrible temperatures, and I know our animal control does a fabulous job. They did. We depend on them. They work well with us. Our Boyd County Shelter does a good job, but their hands are tied too. So it all comes down to language, how things are set up and what is doable. So we would like to be a part of this ordinance or whatever we are going to plan to do as a community. Um, the calls are relentless. You know, animals freezing to death. What is shelter? According to the state, it's three sides and a roof. That is it. No bottom, no bedding, nothing. Um, you know, there's a lot of things that can be added to what we can make doable. And we are in support of that. Um, we also need to hold people accountable. And I think that's something that we can do as a community that won't require anything far more than what we're already doing except to a degree. So I would like to offer our support and my personal support. And if we can be on a committee, any of us, any of our members, we can do something better. That's just what I feel like. I'm proud of this community. I've lived here all my life. I got back here, became an educator here. But I feel like this is something that is truly lacking the well-being of our personal pets and making people responsible. So.
We, we agree. And let me assure you, our input, make sure.
Yeah. Let me, let me jump in here for just a second. This may make you feel better as well. Yesterday, when we were in Frankfurt, we had a great conversation with Representative Clark. And she informed us that she has filed a bill in the state legislature to define shelter, to define the tether and the enclosure and all of that. So that, that language, they're working on tightening up all of that because that's, that's a hole in the, in the law. Um, so just to, this commission knows and so that you're aware, that is making its way through the state legislature now.
Well, that's great because...
She filed it on Friday.
That's great because Kentucky is fifty. And that's just not acceptable in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, we, we'll have, we'll have to stand tall in this, but we have to deal with reason. There's nobody that, y'all have four dogs and a cat, three birds. Yeah, leave them out. But, you know, uh, keep it in mind that when the state, uh, makes a regulation, I appreciate, Representative Clark worked on this so quickly. Uh, the city can make it more stringent.
Exactly.
We can't make it less stringent, but we can make it more stringent because we kind of know our community and our area, some of our neighborhoods. The, the mayor's office gets calls on all the time. People worried about the pets down the street, the pet next door, whatever, it's out in this sub freezing weather with nothing. Uh, I think it's everybody's responsibility to be involved in some way. I truly do. And the people that get all gyrated and upset aren't the ones that need to get gyrated and upset.
I totally agree.
Now, what we can do enforcement wise, the chief, we, of course, you know, we got, been on a long one. And, you know, there's a line there on, on them and, and it makes it difficult for them. You know, a lot of people, you pull a car out in front of their house, they're probably gonna conform.
Exactly.
Uh, you don't have to do much of anything. But, but the, the biggest offenders, yeah, I don't care. You don't care about anything. So we, we're looking for things that our officers can deal with or we can, our, our, uh, control people, having control people can make a contact accounting party. You know, some way that we can apply to the courts to, to make, you know, send something down to county attorneys, send a warning down. Hey, you gotta do better with this. You know, if not us, who? Who's gonna take care of these poor pets that people don't care about? They want to have them, but they don't care about them. Uh, I'm, I'm in that corner, so.
Well, thank you.
Me as well. Thank you, Kathy. We can do better.
Yes, we can. And I commend you all for even considering this because it takes a village to get everything done. And I feel Ashland's village is very strong and I'm proud of this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Come up.
Mike Maynard, eighteen nineteen Eloise Street. I'm the executive director for Hillcrest Bruce Mission. And, uh, wanted to make sure and bring attention to, uh, the really good article that was in the paper this, this last week on the bus system. And it really highlighted, uh, how essential and effective bus system is for the city and its residents. And it did a really good job of highlighting the pair of transit that's available for our folks that have physical limitations and are elderly that need to get from point to point. Um, and what I'm gonna say, this will touch upon the discussion that we've had over the last month about the buggies that have been, you know, left throughout the city and, and your all's efforts in trying to curb some of that. Um, and, and one of the things that we think about when we see the buggies everywhere is that, you know, why, why are they there? Why does somebody want to push a buggy full of groceries from Kroger down Sixth Street, up Sixth Street Hill, all the way to the top of Hillcrest? Why would somebody want to do that? You know, or push a buggy back all the way up to Walmart? And, and the reason is, is because some of the inconveniences the inconveniences of bus routes, bus times, and things of that nature. And one of the things that most people aren't aware of, if you don't ride the bus system and you don't have to go to places that you need to go to, you're not aware that if you were to get on the bus stop at Hillcrest and you wanted to go to Kroger's and come back, that happens to be on the bus route that only runs every other hour. It takes four hours to get on the bus, to go to Kroger's, to shop, wait until that next bus comes around, to get back to Hillcrest. Four hours. This is really the reason of why we have a buggy issue. It's part of the inconvenience. Part of it is too, I mean, you have limited space on a bus. You're not, you can't do a month's worth of grocery shopping and get all your bags on there. And then you're gonna get dropped off at a bus stop. So you have to walk to your house, to your apartment, and those kind of places. So what we've seen over the, my last two years of being at Hillcrest and Bruce is that when you have a congregation of a large number of folks who mostly have limited or unreliable transportation, the bus route needs to be very robust in those locations to serve. They have places they gotta go. If, if you've not been without a car, you have no idea how inconvenient and how much freedom you have given up. Because to go to a grocery store, if you have to get your child on the bus in the morning, you have to wait until that's done. If you have to get your child off the head start bus when they come home, you have to make sure everything is done within that time. And there's necessities for folks who have limited transportation. Usually, they are in a lower economic class that requires them to go to other places, to either get assistance, go to agencies, child services, social security office, DCBS, all these different things. And so, and I know, and in the article, it talks about, and the bus system has done a great job of analyzing and assessing the need for longer hours, you know, to support folks who are working, that don't finish work by four-thirty in the evening. They've looked at doing Saturday service to support folks who are off from work, that are working jobs, that they can go grocery shopping on a Saturday. And so I think the, the bus folk and the, and the finance office, I think they've done a great job of looking at the needs of what needs to happen for our folks, but that we've been talking about for the last couple of years. We need to do something. I know we've done surveys with folks who are riding the bus, and that's great. The only people that are riding the bus are the folks that it's convenient for. If it's not convenient for you, you're not riding the bus. And I'm sure we probably missed a lot of folks who would ride the bus if the routes were more convenient and times were more convenient. Now, I don't have an answer for the routes or things like that, but, and I know they've been looking at it, but to better support our community, and especially those that have limited transportation, we need to alter and adjust the bus routes, the whole thing. We need a complete revamping of how our bus works so that we can support folks. And I think if you make public transportation convenient and easy, I, I think you'll get rid of most of your buggy issues.
I agree. We've had several of these conversations. I know you and I have been in a couple of meetings where we've, we've talked about, we have a, we have a great bus service, and we turned that over to finance last year, and they've done a great job with it, and it's, it's doing wonderfully. But I think, again, we've gotta go one step further and say, are we, are, if, if, and I've said this for four, five years now, four years now at least, if we're gonna go in the hole for the bus system, can we not at least make it so that it benefits the most people the most of the time? And like I said, I know you and I have had several conversations about, about rerouting and, and putting those buses in places and in times that they're actually needed, so just sort of making loops around the city. And I don't know how that works, and I can't even, I can't, I can't say that I have a solution. I just.
Yeah, it's far easier.
I just say that we need to do this.
Said and done.
Yeah.
And I've been on commissions down here historically. We had the same discussion we have right now thirty years ago. And it's, I don't know of another city in Kentucky with twenty-two thousand people has a bus system. I don't know even fifty thousand maybe has a bus system. But bus systems are antiquated in communities. One of the reasons is, even the people, people don't wanna be on schedule. At least don't wanna be on schedule. And I, I will say, and I want to make a couple of comments. I'll let Mr. Grubb address it a little bit. He and Michelle, his assistant, they, they kinda took this over because they felt like they needed to take it over. And they're doing a legal job on it. They've changed routes. They, they, they've done all kinds of adjustments for people. And as we make adjustments, the key, Mike, is you, you try to do something, like schedule something for people. And listen, unless you're without transportation, it's kinda hard to plug into it. We're, we're all, you know, our kids, more than anybody, they're, they're either gonna be picked up or they're gonna drive themselves or whatever. And then we got a major element, I'm talking about taxpayers in Ashland, I'm talking about, you know, older part of the community. And then we have a whole other element, unemployed, handicapped, whatever the case may be, unable to get any employment. And they make up large segments of our community. But in order to tailor something to suit everyone is very, very difficult. So I'm confident, I'm not gonna speak for them, and I'll let Mr. Grubb address it a little bit. But the truth of it is, no matter what they do, they'll do a trial, and they've done that for years. You know, we, we, you know, sometimes you kinda go with not just the squeaky wheel. You go with people that, you know, a group of people come and say, you know, we, you know, we're gonna have a group of people come to say they need to be, go to King's Arrows Hospital for an hour and be picked up and brought back home because they gotta visit people a whole lot. They do it all for care or treatment. They need to get to the bank. They can't get to the bank, so we're gonna have to get to the bank and buy even less time. I mean, some people probably don't ask that. Anyway, there, there are a hundred considerations once you say, well, and, and I know going grocery shopping is, is a real, everybody has to do that. I mean, every day. Not every day, but, you know, a weekly basis usually. But whatever could be implemented, and, and probably right now, that Mr. Grubb, Miss Beach, are probably doing some runs, trial runs now to see what ridership is. Now, if, if the buses were full every day, we would be a losing proposition. So don't get me wrong. I'm saying, if you pick up numbers of people, it's gonna make everything okay. We, we're willing to run the system. At a loss, the government matches, you know, some, some of those funds, but not all of them because we think it is important. We think it is a, we think it's kind of a feather in our cap in Ashland to have a bus system. That kind of delays us as a progressive community because more and more people every year are needing more and more transportation, no matter where they are. But the taxpayers in Ashland have to foot that bill. If you do too many routes, that people aren't gonna run. And, and obviously, the real miraculous thing you're looking for is you put a route in on a Saturday to get people to the store and get them back within an hour and all that. And the buses are full, or half full, or three, whatever the case may be. Again, there are a lot of free riders, there are a lot of reduced rides and all that. I guess I wanna emphasize the point, if they're full, it's not gonna make up what it's cost us to do it. But since that's the case, I think you already mentioned it, since that's the case, let's, let's do the best we can to get people where they need to be and back at a reasonable time. It isn't easy. And Mr. Grubb, I'll preface this for you. If you wanna, if you wanna come up and tell us how you do that and how you try on it or whatever.
There's more that I can ask, sir, other than, we are taking notes here. We hope to start Saturday service maybe first or on cycle, not on March, April the first, in that time frame. But we have, like, a lot of contract and things like that.
Yeah. The other critical part of this, and I think we've gotta be mindful of, is we want our people to work. And if the biggest challenge for them is transportation, you know, I, I, that's the only thing I think we all want to, is to make sure the hours are convenient to, to get our people to work and, and back from work. And some of the things we've dealt with at the board is unemployment. And I think you can use the bus as an economic development tool to get people back to work. And I just, I hope when we do evaluate that, the times that we're also asking business owners when they need their employees at work so we know that's when we need those bus routes to be running. That's the only thing I have to add.
I think we can tweak this. I think we can fix it. I really do. And then adding Saturday service, I think, is a step in the right direction. I think they'll work with you.
Just wanted to do the most we. And I appreciate all you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
You have your hands full. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else? Other students wanna take a shot? Star? Get a star. I'll call your teacher. Okay. We appreciate y'all being here. Mr. Williams, you on the State Home Meeting?
Yes, sir, if you don't care at all.
We're glad to have you. Glad to have you. Does that mean if you don't, you'll have to entertain yourself?
Yes, sir. That's exactly. And I've already been on duty all morning.
I'm sure you have. All right. Old business out tonight.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Summit Fence Company, Inc., in amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, for the purchase and installation of fencing, gates, and all privileges with the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, Division of Water Distribution and Waste Water Collection, Mill Street Facility.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm D.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Service Company, Inc., in amount of fifty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars, for the purchase and installation of the twenty-sixth Street Sewage Station Channel Grinder Replacement Project for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, Division of Waste Water Collection.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm C.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance, an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the revised job description for the position of laboratory technician in Division of Water Treatment Plant, the revised job description for the position of solid waste worker one in Division of Fleet Maintenance Solid Waste, both in Department of Public Services and Utility Operations, and amending the authorized positions listing of the policies and procedures, compensation plan, and classification plan, as adopted by ordinance number fifty-one, series of two thousand seventeen, as previously amended.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm D.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Daniel Runyon, DBA Daniel's Lawn Care, for the purposes of all labor for the abatement of high grass and weeds on residential lots throughout the city limits of Ashland, for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Come on.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Reason that we are, everybody's real forged on it, proven these. We've already read these in another meeting. And in city government, you have to have two readings, two separate meetings for something to pass. So all of us have read these, the background material on these before, and these were brought over. This is the second reading, which might last. Just so you know, we just don't sit here and say, okay, yeah, we have all for that. We have some pretty good discussions on first readings many times. Sorry. I'm E.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a deed of conveyance between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Harvey Family Limited Partnership regarding the acceptance and donation of eleven lots located near the Charles and Betty Russell Park Trail property.
Salute.
Second.
Well, I, part of my discussion will be, if you wanna make sure we get a letter to them that we all sign, okay, Major, you put, I could put a letter together if you just, to thank them for that donation. All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm H.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and Rock Fields regarding approachment for a sign at fifteen sixteen Central Avenue on the city's right of way.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm G.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Dixon Engineering, Inc., for professional engineering services for the preparation of bid specifications for the coating, painting, and repairing of the Summit Water Storage Tank in an amount not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm H.
Second reading and adoption of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending ordinance number forty-seven, series of nineteen-two, as previously amended by ordinance number one oh one, series of two thousand fifteen, which requires an application for permission to make cuts in excavations in public rights away, sets the fee for such permit and the penalty for violations of the ordinance.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Any old business? Consent agenda.
Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting and authorizing and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda with the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners on February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
New business out of A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky Fire Department and the Tri-State Airport Authority Fire Rescue.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close, like, sign.
I'm B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute Task Order Number twenty-three between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, Inc., regarding the two thousand eighteen annual combined sewer overflow reports for the Department of Public Services and Utility Operations in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question. Mr. Eastwood?
Yes.
Do we, do we have to send reports to the federal government on our combined sewer overflow?
Yes, we do yearly. That's what this.
That's what this is? Okay. You know, there are a lot of cities that haven't commenced this yet.
Yeah.
All over the country, really. Right across the river, one of, I know. And I don't know, I remember when we started this, it was gonna be, I think, I think it said ten thousand dollars a day. If you, if you remember that? Were you here then?
I wasn't here then, but the fine structure was supposed to be commensurate to what it costs you in savings. So ten thousand dollars a day might have been a minimal.
Yeah.
But it was gonna be really good.
Yeah. But anyway, I think it's a combined sewer overflow system that we were mandated to put in in Ashland, Kentucky, as other, every other municipality in America. And it was the right thing to do, but just like when it is the right thing, and the federal government mandates it, they're gonna fine you if you don't, but they don't give you any money to do it. You just do it yourselves. Our estimate for completing ours is, was how much?
For all the projects, it's about forty-three million dollars.
You know what we could do with forty-three million dollars for the City of Ashland? We did combined sewer overflows. That's what we did with it. But we're not, we're not quite finished. It's a ton of money for a place like Ashland. And it was a federal mandate. And what it did, we had, had a lot of, we had a lot of systems where sewage, rainwater, and storm, storm drains were overflowing, mixing, and our storm drains head to the river. So we had raw sewage going to the river. And it was the right thing to do. But there's so few communities doing the right thing because it costs too much. But Ashland, Kentucky stepped up and then from several years ago, I mean, how years ago we've been doing it?
Right. Since about two thousand and ten was the first project.
Yeah. Well, and a lot of these haven't addressed yet. But it's the right thing to do, to keep that affluent, that type of fluid out of the river. But you can imagine from here, just from here in Pittsburgh, what's going on in that river. Communities aren't doing that and haven't done it. But we, we weren't about to get our, our taxpayers pay a fine. So we, we embarked on it, and we're, we're near a reasonable ending. All right?
Yeah. The last project we had is the Sewer Treatments Plan Expansion, which is the largest project, but after that, we'll be, we'll be completed.
Yeah. So all over town, all over the areas, more southeast and west than Ashland, we, we've done construction and brought these lines together to protect what goes in the river. It's a big deal.
Mayor, one, one other point, correct me on the statistics, Mr. Eastwood, but on the twenty-ninth street alone, what we diverted from not going to the wastewater treatment plant, so storm water is two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day on a dry day.
Yes, that's enough to fill Dawson Pool about at one and a half times.
And then on a wet weather event, we've, we've had a, basically a monitor in there at one point eight million gallons that did not have to go through the wastewater treatment plant as a result of the twenty-ninth.
Three point five.
Three point five. It all been off for, for just save us there.
For the month of December, we could have filled Dawson Pool, I think it's four hundred fifty times with the amount of storm water that would have gone through the plant otherwise with that project, so it's a remarkable achievement.
Yeah, that's, that's the other side of this, you know, I'm talking about the, the real downside of sewage going in the river. And they're, they're telling you about the downside of rainwater going into our sewer treatment plant, and we're treating it like it was blue water, and it can easily go in the river, but so that, there's the savings, it takes, takes a few, a few decades to recoup the forty-three million, of course, at that rate.
And that rainwater was displacing sewage that could have gone into the sewer treatment plant otherwise, so for that four hundred fifty Dawson Pools that would be filled, you can guess that we are now treating that amount of sewage that would have otherwise probably been discharged.
Good point, thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Prose like sign. Proposer, are we ready to have a healthy discussion on this, uh, proposal and report agenda?
Yes, Mayor, um, end of January, Commissioner sent, uh, an email asking, uh, us to look into strengthening animal cruelty laws for Asheville, uh, Ms. Queen already touched a little bit on it, specifically, uh, to add provisions, to look at adding provisions, uh, that follow the laws in Pennsylvania. Uh, and these included improved tethering conditions for outside dogs, no more than nine hours tethered in the twenty-four hour period, uh, tether must be longer, uh, three times length of dog or ten feet, in more than thirty minutes and ninety plus or thirty, minus thirty-two degree weather, must have water and shade, must be secured by an appropriate collar, no toe or log chain or choke pinch prong or chain collars, tethered space must be clear of excessive waste, no open sores, wounds on the dog's body, additionally, animals, animals must be provided sanitary shelter that allows the animal to maintain normal body temperature and keep animals dry all year. Uh, the staff, we got together very briefly, we've got, uh, Brian Felty from Garage and also Dave Branham, our Animal Control Officer, staff met, we came up with some very simple pros and cons, which have already been touched on a little bit, um, for the open comment section, uh, but three pros, they're very simple, but more clarity on definition of guidelines, uh, education residents for more effective self-compliance and would show more caring and support on behalf of the City of, uh, Asheville. One of the things that, uh, as we had the discussion, I made a comparison to what we do in code enforcement, uh, roughly, on code enforcement, we send out violations, eighty percent of people comply, uh, pl- eighty-five percent, Mr. Fulham could give you details on that, in our discussions with Dave Branham, he said the vast majority of people, when they know about, uh, our ci- our ordinance do comply, upwards of ninety percent, um, and so tho- those are on the pro side, if you put something out like that and people know it, most people are, are, oh, they're gonna do the right thing. Uh, on the con side, uh, the negative side, it'd be very difficult to enforce without voluntary compliance, um, could not access, so if you're looking on the time limitations, you have to have somebody, and I'll ask for legal on this to, to add further depth, um, but you physically have to have somebody watching that for that time period. Uh, could not access private property without a search warrant, uh, time constraints make difficult to enfor- make it difficult to enforce visual evidence, uh, removes the Animal Control Officer discretion on a case-by-case basis, and gives more leverage to disputing neighbors. I think generally speaking, we do follow the broad KRS guidance, um, Dave has, excuse me, Mr. Branham has prosecuted thirteen cases of animal cruelty in the last twelve years under the auspices of the KRS and has been successful on all of those. Um, trying to think if there's anything else from the staff, if there's anything else that I missed on that for adding to kick off the discussion.
So Chief, we, we have to send an officer to Pittsburgh to get a, a warrant for a disservice.
If we run into a, a situation where the property owner won't allow us access, uh, or we can't see it visually, you know, from a, a field of view, uh, from the public side, we're gonna have to have the evidence, you know, uh, already to obtain a search warrant to go in and inspect. Um, uh, there, there, we, during this, we've researched and found, uh, that it does require us to obtain a search warrant to continue an investigation in this, so that, uh, kinda intensifies the, uh, the need to already have good solid information or evidence, so it's, it's a restriction for us, and it's, it falls under a fourth amendment to, you know, to unauthorized search and seizure.
How many of these are you calling on?
Uh, in some of the statistics I supplied the, uh, city manager, uh, I researched for the month of January, and animal calls or animal lucid calls are varied from everything, from a barking dog to the check the welfare, uh, officers even initiating a welfare check, and of course, we have, we have a large deer population, you know, we have collisions in, in the city, uh, we answered over thirty calls in the month of January on animal complaints.
People, fortunately, I guess, you know, people tune in a little bit better with freezing weather to, to make how people handle pets or, or the animals.
I can also, I can also, just to, to complement Chief's information, I apologize for not sharing this, uh, last year, Mr. Branham provided, twenty eighteen, a total of six hundred twenty-three service calls, uh, of that breakdown, three hundred and forty-three to the Boyd County Animal Shelter, a hundred and forty-seven on dogs, three hundred and thirty-nine on cats, and a hundred and seventy-seven other. Is there anything else to add on that, Mr. Branham?
So, wait a minute, so how many total did you say for the year?
Six hundred twenty-three service calls.
And one prosecution per year?
Well, it could be a barking dog.
And have animal, animal cruelty prosecution.
So there's only one instance?
Probably four years without having to do an animal cruelty prosecution.
How many animal cruelty calls do you get versus barking dog?
Probably two to one.
What is it?
Two to one, I think.
So out of three hundred calls, there are animal cruelty?
One hundred of them, at, at minimum, at minimum, one hundred of them would have been animal cruelty for a check of welfare.
So out of one?
They're just unfounded.
So out, how many were unfounded?
All of them. If it's founded, it's prosecuted. If I go out, if I get an animal check of welfare call?
And you're saying unfounded based on the way the, the legislation's written, based on the, the law, the way you have to follow it?
Yes.
Well, uh, Mr. Branham is outstanding.
Absolutely.
And I might add this, I've chased dogs with him before. I don't, I hate to tell you, one was mine, a rescue dog, mirror all over South Asheville, and, uh, somebody told me, he said, hey, one kid I, he said, country governor, he said, it's over by Uni Baptist Church, we were over around Jackson and that, that's all, big white dog, it's easy to spot, but, uh, but there was none that looked just like mine, also caused a problem like that, but we chased off, but we got it, we kind of got it. Let me say this, just, just as a side, you know, I'll say this, other than I want you to be, maybe have a little more pride in Asheville, Kentucky, and do you are as a citizen, we have absolutely zero responsibility to have an animal control officer. We don't have to hire somebody, have a truck, gasoline, dah 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 dah.
We bought you new one a couple of years ago.
Not this year.
Yes.
Or call, maybe call somebody else in the public works to help him on an issue or whatever it could be, that, that's a county responsibility in the state of Kentucky, it's one hundred percent county obligation. We do it as a service to our citizens because they deserve it and they should have it, and this is not a slam against county. You know, they can't, I don't know how long we had one, as well as I remember, I mean, when I was a kid, we had a dog catcher, well, we called him all the time, uh, he's using my dog, better actor, long time, but it is our responsibility, but we're happy to do it, we're proud that we, we do it as an extra, and an extra impetus on protecting the pets as well as protecting the residents, you know, throughout, but, you know, they can't speak for themselves, and I don't care if it's a nice warm day in the summer, if they're starving, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference whether they're freezing at that time if they're starving, and, and abused and neglected on a nice warm day or a really hot day, it makes no difference, and, and somebody's gotta speak for them, and I know people that speak for them every day. We need to speak for them, we, we need to do all we can to protect any kind of abused animals within the law, and not, you know, and, and such that our police officers, uh, you know, aren't handcuffed themselves by what they can do when they want to do so. But I don't, you know, I don't, and I don't care about going to court, I'll show up, you know, whatever case they do. I think the manager's probably pretty accurate, the majority, vast majority of people are law-abiding, if we get a citation from us or the, the animal control has to let them know, hey, you, you know, you can't do that, you gotta, you know, people follow them, the ones that no one follows, so you speak for those pets, well, we, we gotta do something. How many citations last year, Mr. Branham?
In the last two years, I've only done one.
Okay.
And I don't remember if that was last year or the year before.
Any frozen dogs?
None. In the twelve, twelve years I've done this, none.
Well, I think.
Unreported or that we don't know?
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, in, in, in regards to that argument, that obviously we don't have any deaths from freezing animals, the question is, then, if you use that same rationale with child abuse laws, then you would never have child abuse laws in place because, yes, there's not that many child abuse deaths, but you als- also have to have pretty clear child abuse statutes because people still abuse their kids, and they will abuse their pets.
Well, and, and in that vein, we know right now that, that the Kentucky State Legislature is working through the statute, and, so I don't know where that leaves us, but.
Well, I think we have an opportunity that doesn't require the weight on the state because we don't have the two bodies to, to flesh out, we can, we can flesh it out here amongst us, and I don't think there's anything that we're putting, that we're even talking about that isn't common sense.
So it's common sense, but how many more animal control officers do we need to enforce that? Our local law enforcement's answering close to fifty thousand calls a year already, and we cannot put that on them.
There would be no change, the way I'm reading it, this is not a change in the law, it's actually clarifying the existing law so that it gives the officer the opportunity to be able to charge if.
You do not have an ordinance right now that says your dog cannot be outside for longer than nine hours, that's not in our current ordinance.
Right, it's.
So that's, that's something new that would have to be enforced.
And the challenge.
And Chief is telling us that somebody's gonna have to have eyes on that dog for nine hours to prosecute that.
That's why we discuss it, just for common sense analysis.
Yeah, sir, let me ask you, you know, how many times do I bring up to the commission too, we don't have to reinvent a wheel now?
No.
So, so your research, and I know you've done some on this, on the specifics on it, what, what would you, uh, tell us that, that gives some guidance on this?
Well, all right, here's the situation as I understand it, first of all, the criminal offense of cruelty to animals is defined under state law, not under city law, and currently, it's a class A misdemeanor, which is punished, will be held to a year in jail, which is authority we don't have with respect to, uh, local ordinances. It is, it is, as somebody pointed out, uh, somewhat vague, it prohibits mutilation, beating, torturing any animal other than dog or cat, tormenting, telling to provide adequate food, drink, space, healthcare, or by any other means. Now, the official comments to that ordinance were written by Bob Lawson, who was the criminal law professor at University of Kentucky, was my criminal law professor, if you talk any longer in Kentucky, went to UK, I'll tell you, he's the absolute authority on that. In his comments, he said he specifically did not define some of those terms because he thought it was, would be more appropriate to allow a common sense approach and allow juries to determine what was adequate food, what was adequate drink, what was adequate space, what was adequate healthcare. Now, that doesn't mean, though, that we couldn't have, we have local ordinances that go beyond this criminal statute, and they say, for instance, you're gonna have a tag, uh, that you can't be barking as a nuisance and so on, those are enforceable by fines, not by, by up to a year in jail. So could we go and define some of these terms as a local ordinance and have our animal control people enforce violations and fines, I think we could. Uh, what may be on, in the works of it, I wasn't aware of it until Commissioner Clark brought it up, that apparently there's a move afoot in the legislature to amend this to go another way than, than Professor Lawson did, and say, no, let's be more specific about.
What Representative Clark said to me is that she wants a definition for each of those, food, drink, space, healthcare, that's, that's in her bill.
And that would certainly be another way to go, and if that happened, then prosecuting Branham cruelty with the potential jail sentence would, uh, if they use the same type of definitions as in this Pennsylvania statute, you'd be able to look at these things. Now, it's not gonna change the enforcement problems that the chief has, and it's still gonna be difficult to determine whether a dog was, uh, outside for nine hours out of twenty-four or not, and, and my personal opinion is, uh, that Professor Lawson's approach is probably better because when you just say they have to provide adequate food, you don't have to say that they gotta have twelve ounces of, of food a day, you can look at a dog and say, this dog's not being adequately fed, and you can prosecute, but I understand the other approach, I understand the, the need in some of the organizations that have said, no, we would rather have specific guidelines, so I think you, you can do it any way, but we're somewhat limited, we can adopt them locally, our enforcement is not going to be as, as likely to, to have effect in the sense that if you gotta pay a twenty dollar fine, that's one thing, you gotta go to jail for it, and that's another. So, but it's up to you all, uh, I think it's probably, it might be worthwhile to see what the legislature does as anything, we all know that just because a bill's introduced doesn't mean it's gonna get passed, but I would suspect that this is the kind of bill that may have a lot of support, and it may solve the problem for us, uh, but I guess we won't know that until the legislature adjourns, probably in April. That was a long-winded answer, I guess, if it was me, what, what I think the best approach is, I like the general approach that, uh, Professor Lawson had as to the animal cruelty, uh, I think we could add some of these provisions to our local ordinance, even if it is only a fine, I think that we should look at the ones that are easier to enforce, I think the, for instance, the length of tether, that's easy to enforce, the types of collars that you're gonna band, you know, you can look at that either as or as, how many hours is, is the dog outside, that's gonna be impossible to enforce, so I personally wouldn't recommend that.
Shelter could go.
As I tell you all the time, I'm just a grassman, you know, it's up to you all to decide what you want to do.
Yeah, I think shelter.
I think defining shelter very adequate, and I think that's.
Shelter could be defined, yes.
Missing than what we have now, that's also representative.
Representative Clark had pointed that out specifically.
She mentioned it yesterday.
I'm, I'm all for this, I mean, uh, but I, we have to be very careful about, because of enforcement.
Yeah.
How we're gonna enforce it, and be, you know, you have subjective situations where a neighbor doesn't like another neighbor, so she's constantly calling and, and complaining on the neighbor's dog or cat or whatever, and then you have a domestic dispute, uh, so that's bound, I'm a dog lover, I have dogs, the dogs are inside and they sleep with us, they eat with us, and I got four cats, and, and, uh, you know, I'm a, I'm an animal lover. Last year at this time, there was a dog, uh, outside chained on a block of ice on the, on the corner of Gartle, several calls to get this dog, and I went out to Rural King, got to crawl up in a tractor trailer and got the last bell of straw, and took straw in a doghouse and, and food and water, and I just knocked on the door, I said, here, here, this is for your dog, and she just stared and looked at me, so you can't fix stupid on a lot of these people, I mean, what can you say, you know, she didn't say thank you, she didn't say anything.
Did she take the straw into her house?
Uh, she, uh, well, it was laying there when I left there, uh, so I don't know, but I, I kinda moved it around in the doghouse for the dog, but she finally moved away, I mean, we'd have gave her a ticket, big deal, she'd have thrown that in file thirteen somewhere, but it's, it's very, the enforcement is what is the clincher, and, uh, it's a common sense thing, if you got a husky or a malmut or a german shepherd or something like that, how, my, my dogs like that don't wanna come inside, they wanna stay outside in the snow and ice, so it's very, you gotta use common sense, now, this little, you know, little chihuahua or something like that with short hair, a little queenie outside or something like that, you know, then, then, you know, you gotta use your common sense.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to draft a, uh, ordinance for animal control that would enhance, uh, the existing ordinance as, uh, we discussed today, and then provide it for us for further review and, and discussion.
I'm second.
May I, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, is that a discussion item then, or a?
That is to repair and draft an ordinance.
To have it for first reading next time?
Well, it doesn't have to be next time, but I think. Well, it doesn't have to be next time, but I think the gym reviews and provides us with, and then we can make a discussion as to what we want included in the ordinance.
We can discuss what's in it before we vote on it.
Correct, that's the goal.
I could prepare something based on the discussion and circulate it, and then you all decide.
That'd be great.
How you want to massage it.
Thank you all. All, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Discussion on fiscal notes.
First of all, I want to say, before you get started, I like on our, our page today where it says fiscal note. I think that's awesome. I'd like to see that on this, exactly like that.
Well, that's why we proposed it.
I agree we adopt this.
Yeah.
Legally.
Well, we have what, what we need to do. And again, this, this is something that was brought up, uh, in some of our emails, and I went ahead and took the liberty of drafting a proposed ordinance and circulated it to you all to see if we had any feedback. That, that's just sort of what I did, was take, uh, the suggestions that you all had. Chicago recently adopted an ordinance, looked at it, sort of tried to put the two together and came up with something. Uh, if you all like the way it is, we can just bring it back as is. If you have any, like we did before, any discussion or comments that I think we need to do this with it or do that with it additionally.
I thought everything was fine.
I can't remember, um, because it's been, we just said since I read it.
You don't remember everything, right?
I slipped since then, I'm sorry. The only thing I don't want to see us get ourselves sort of locked into in terms of a fiscal note ordinance is we can't act without them. If that's not in there, is it?
Well, actually it is. I, I had the same thought, and I put provision in there that said, notwithstanding other provision of this ordinance, which is the part that says you've got to do it. A measure may be considered and adopted in the absence of a fiscal note of emergency requiring waiver or the fiscal note requirement is declared by voting two-thirds of all the members.
Okay. Well, I don't want to.
Because this is our time when that happens.
Into a situation where, you know, and it happens to us all the time. Somebody comes in and, and wants us to waive a fee or whatever, and we say, oh, we can't do anything because we don't have the fiscal note attached to them. So I, I just don't want to get ourselves into that situation.
I think, I think you needed to do that, something like, where emergency, go ahead.
And just to clarify to the public, the fiscal note request basically enables you as the taxpayer to see what the cost of anything that's brought before the board, uh, is. And sometimes we have that information in our documentation, but it's not necessarily shared on the agenda or with the public unless you get an FOI, Freedom of Information Act. And this gives the, the taxpayer the opportunity to see the cost of anything that we are considering, and it's going to be available on the agenda.
I like it.
Mr. Brown, you, you've been, you've been involved in this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and meet your financial prowess? We're doing the right thing?
Yes, sir.
So I need to know.
Bringing back for first reading in its current form, if nobody has any opposed, James.
Actually, yes, that'd be great. As you can see, the, the Finance Department went ahead and gave you an example on the new.
Do I have a different agenda than everyone else?
You might have.
Especially for you.
I got it from down there. Mine doesn't have, just so you know, I'm not crazy. My printed agenda doesn't have that fiscal, no, no, it's on, it's on my.
It's on the tablet.
Tablet, but it's not on my printed one, so I just, that's why I said I'd like to see it on this, and everybody's like, I didn't amend it there.
We're, we're still working out the budget, we'll get those odds of the agenda for everybody so we don't need to do a motion, we're just going to draw. We'll break back for first reading, then the board is already drafting, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointment. Counsel? Oh, right. Mayor recommends appointment of Amanda Clark, City Commissioner, to the Ashland Housing Authority Board, and we would need a motion to approve or consent to the mayor's appointment. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? The American Service in that, I have served in that before, for a appointed commissioner, and Commissioner Clark's the first one I saw.
It's not like you did.
It's a great board, this served one, and she'll do a good job for us. All favor?
Aye.
The mayor recommends appointment of David Daniel to the Ashland Planning Commission, and we could entertain a motion to approve consent to the mayor's appointment.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Appointment.
And the mayor recommends appointment of Mike Miller and Susan Fleming to the Ashland Board of Zoning and Adjustment, and we entertain, can entertain a motion for approval and consent to the mayor's recommendation.
So move. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Any other new business? Uh, any motion to go executive session for individual personnel matters?
So move.
Two, two, I'm sorry, two. Uh, we call executive session, is, is, we just go into a conference room here and usually, or only by law, we can talk about personnel, individual personnel, litigation, if we're about to get sued or we're going to sue somebody, or property acquisition, something of traction. All right, Counsel, I'm covered, and very well. Uh, that's all we can talk about, one of those three things, and we're telling you, we're talking about a couple of personnel items. And we cannot take any action in executive session. So we're not going to go vote in there on anything, we're just going to talk about. We may come out here and vote, uh, as a result, and sometimes we don't. Sometimes we come out and we just adjourn. So it's not like we're secretive, but obviously with personnel, if we, if we're going or not to take one way or the other, some kind of action, we're not going to put anybody's name out there, we're not even sure what we're going to do. So, saying that, Mr. Williams, again, I want to thank you for, students for being here. Uh, some of you got a few Z's in, I noticed. I was due to lunch, I understand all that, I've been there. But, but basically, you, you were acting, some of you acting like you're paying attention, but it made you feel good. But thanks for bringing them, and you all, I would wait if I were you all, so, so if you get back. Catch fifth period or sixth period, whatever it is now, last period. Thank you all for being here. We'll let, we'll return from executive session, let the record reflect at two fifty. And you got the time we went in, I'm sure, Susan.
Okay.
And only personnel matters were discussed. No actions taken in executive session.
I want to, Mayor, I want to move that the commission approved and consented to the disciplinary action proposed by Chief Todd Kelly with respect to APD disciplinary action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
Mayor, I have a motion that we deny grievance two zero one nine dash zero zero one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Any other business for the board? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
We're adjourned.